Do you have my father, we think you can stay to see what we live, guide us this evening. This is the May twenty-six, twenty twenty, regular meeting of the Newton City Council. I want to say how much we continue to appreciate everyone's cooperation and patience as we move through these extraordinary times. So we'll move on with the agenda, the first item on the agenda or the minutes from the regular meeting of May the twelfth, twenty twenty.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second, approve is written. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda this afternoon, or this evening, reports from boards of commission. We have one appointment, and if, Mr. Phillips, if you'll put that on our next agenda, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Phillips, do you have anything this evening?
Oh, just, just one quick thing, Mr. Mayor. Been getting a lot of calls last few days, I guess with Memorial Day regarding the status of our pool. So I always wanted to give council and the public an update on our pools. Obviously, as you know, we have not, at this point in time, decided to update the pool, so the pools do remain closed. We have been in conversations frequently with our pool operator, the YMCA, about the possibility of opening the pools. We're evaluating the, the, the standards within the governor's order for pool openings, evaluating the feasibility of what that situation looks like. We are in the process of, of getting the pool prepared in case we have the ability to open, but we have not set a date. Now, obviously, if things work out, we'd love to open the pool, but we want to make certain that if we are opening the pool, that everything is in order. So, just to report, we're looking into it. There's not been any dates set, so I just wanted to give you that update, and then if you've got any questions regarding the pool, I'd be happy to answer those.
Anyone? Well, certainly keeping our citizens safe is the highest priority, so work through that and let us know what happens. We appreciate you giving us that report tonight.
Thank you.
Two things on, from, on the agenda tonight, for me. The first was, was an agenda item is there, and I'll, I'll do that in a second, but the second one is, I need to go ahead and appoint the chairman of the Ermen Redevelopment Council, and I'm going to appoint Gerald Walton, who's been a longtime member and has agreed to serve as chairman of the Ermen Redevelopment Council, tonight. So that's just my appointment. I need to make that in public. So the next item, of course, is the, one that is the agenda item. Newton Downtown Development Authority requests to utilize public spaces for professional activities. And let me tell you where this came from, as everybody on council knows, Ray DeBose and I both serve on the Downtown Development Authority. Mr. DeBose, Councilman DeBose is actually chairman this year. We had brought to us, from, from Courtney and from Abigail, in our last meeting, their desire to try to encourage business in the downtown area and, and of course, across all of Newton. And they came to us with several different ideas, and as we went through the discussion at the meeting, it, it occurred to me that, that we needed to do something in our ordinance in order to make, to give them the ability and to give the staff the ability, in particular, our city manager, the ability to move through the approval of some of the things that we're talking about. Otherwise, it was going to come back to us on a one-off, business-by-business request to do this in this location, and then that in the other location, and that was going to be a chore. This way, they have this ordinance, this temporary ordinance in front of them. Mr. Phillips has it in front of him. We can, we can allow them to take action to encourage people to, for businesses to, to continue to open up in Newton in a safe way, which they've done. Downtown over the past ten, ten days has been increasingly busy every day, so we're, we're seeing more and more of that, and we want to encourage more and more of that in a safe way that adheres to the guidelines that we need to adhere to. So you've got this in front of you. There's been a couple of edits. It's been an ongoing, it's been a fluid document over the last, because that, that meeting, I think, was this last week, wasn't it?
Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, Tuesday, last week. So we put this together on the fly, hoping to get it to us tonight for our consideration. Open it up for questions or comments of me, or Mr. DeBose, or Pasco, or Mr. Phillips, anybody?
Is this something temporary, or what?
It is temporary.
Okay, and that's till January of twenty twenty-one?
That's right.
Unless rescinded earlier.
Right.
Yeah, that's perfect. I thought, I thought it was a great idea.
And the, the one question I do have, it might be for the police chief, or maybe for Mr. Phillips, how do you enforce this, or how do you ensure?
We, we had a lot of conversation, and when I say we, myself, Mr. Craver, Mayor Brady, Mr. Sears, the DDA, about the, the alcohol enforcement. And the thing that we kept going back to, Councilmember Alexander, is, is our history. The, the fact that, you know, we've been having alcohol-related special events for a few years now, about three years, I think Mr. Craver said, with no, no, no issues. We also have been constantly in communication with some of our other sister cities, neighboring cities who have similar ordinances, and, and the fact is that i- if you're going to be abusing alcohol, you're probably not going to choose to come to downtown and walk around the court square to abuse it. So the evidence isn't there in, in, in the city or in other nearby communities where it's been an issue. Now, that being said, if it becomes an issue, as Mr. Councilmember Shell said, that's when we come back before you to tweak, remove, or whatever we have to do. So we don't believe it's going to be a problem, and that's why we feel comfortable presenting you with this temporary ordinance today.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else?
I've got two questions. One, one is, during the discussion with the DDA, and just amongst staff, stuff like that, has there been any consideration of our image of being family-friendly, how that would affect, how that image that we are family-friendly, maybe possible repercussions?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're always wanting to be a family-friendly community, and I believe we are. Again, I don't believe there's a distinction between, you know, allowing alcohol in a public place versus being family-friendly. And again, I think, I don't believe the intent, and I don't think what's going to be the outcome, is just a party on the street. So therefore, I don't believe it's going to have a negative impact on our reputation. As a matter of fact, you probably won't see a lot of it. I think it just gives our businesses the opportunity to enhance trade. You know, that's why we have suggested the stickers, because we did have a conversation about, well, how can we at least prohibit or, or people from bringing a cooler downtown sitting on the sidewalk? Well, one, I don't think they're going to do that unless it's a special event, but that's why we're introducing the stickers. That the sticker must be put on a cup. That way, we can say, hey, yes, that cup has been officially issued by a licensed provider. So yes, a lot of that was discussed. I don't think we have all the answers, but I think this is a very good opportunity, number one, to give our merchants a chance for increased business and for us to evaluate what works and what doesn't work.
You know, this was something that, you know, we've been discussing with the Arts and Entertainment District and some other suggestions about being able to enhance the downtown area and do outdoor events, outdoor consumption within our downtown areas. And, you know, we've issued special permits, like I was thinking of the Mayo, for instance, for them to do things and set up extra things in the parking lots. This, to me, is not new for us in the, the concept, but maybe new in execution. And I think that this was something that we were really going to end up trying at some point anyway. So I'm supportive of this. It helps the businesses to socially distance while they try to continue to do what they need to do to remain safe and stay in business.
Yes, and I, I do think one of the things we need to remember is that these businesses downtown have a, the alcohol license is a, is a privilege. It's not a right. And several of them have at least five thousand dollars invested in that license every year, most of them. So they're not likely to abuse just because someone's out on the sidewalk versus someone in, inside the building. We're trying to expand their footprint to make up for the shrinking of the footprint on the inside, is, is the, you had two things, I think you said.
Yes. The other, the other one had to deal with the, the date, and it kind of, it ties in with our agenda item F regarding the banner and signs. And we can discuss this again later. You know, I like that it goes to January. I'd like to possibly, you know, we get to F items, talk about maybe extend that one to January as well. I didn't know if we were going to, spoke with staff earlier, this, it just happened to tie in.
Yeah, it was just the, the other agenda item was previously prepared with the dates, so.
It makes sense to make them both.
Yeah.
One, and as we're discussing this, would it be possible, either Mr. Phillips, or, you know, whoever feels comfortable, just for, for the record, going over the salient points of this, of the alcohol, I don't think it just made it, did it make it to the website?
Uh, this did not make it to, to, to the website. The letter, the letter from the DDA made it to the website.
Yeah.
And the, and the ordinance was distributed to council and the, and the media. There's, there's four, four primary sections in the ordinance, and without reading them, I'll give you a little overview. Section number one gives the city manager, myself, my office, with the help of the Business Development Main Street Office, the ability to approve the use of public places such as sidewalks and parking spaces to expand businesses. What the ordinance says is that the, the, the business must present an application, which the application is of no charge, showing how they want to utilize the sidewalk and the parking spaces. If that utilization affects an adjoining property owner, they must include in their application written consent from that adjoining property owner or, or, or tenant, and then it's subject to approval. We have the authority in my office to approve that request. That's section number one. Section number two is the ability to carry an open container. I think the more common term that you're seeing used in the U.S. Chamber and the Georgia State Chamber is sip-and-stroll district, trying to retain that family-friendly. And the sip-and-stroll, the way we have it worded, would be permitted between the hours of twelve noon and twelve midnight, Monday through Saturday. It would have to be poured in a metal, plastic, or a paper cup, no more than sixteen ounces, and attached with the city-provided sticker. Section number three refers to institution, or establishments that have a license to sell growlers. As you know, a growler is a packaged product that must be sealed before it leaves the premises. In this particular situation, you would be able to pour similar to the sixteen-ounce cups up to thirty-two ounces per customer per day, which is basically two sixteen-ounce drinks, for the purpose of onsite consumption or consumption in the district. Section number four, we didn't want to leave out the rest of our, our restaurants in the rest of Newton, because they're just as important as our downtown establishments, but this gives them the opportu- opportunity to submit a similar application to the, my office that would allow them to utilize their parking spaces to expand their dining areas and allow them to serve their food and alcohol in their parking lots. And those are the, the four primary sections of the ordinance, Councilman Crickell.
Go ahead, please.
Anyone else?
I know, when you, regarding the stickers, then I don't want to assume anything, but you said up to sixteen ounces per pour with a limit of two to three, right? Is that right?
Two.
It would be, it would be two sixteen, well, a total of thirty-two ounces per customer per day.
Okay, so am I going to assume that each time they get a fill-up, then they get a new sticker?
Well, that would be, that's going to be the responsibility of the proprietor, the license holder, to regulate the pours. Now, obviously, there are certain provisions already in the alcohol license for the onsite consumption of, of over-serving, et cetera. So we already have certain mechanisms in the or, in the ordinance if they were to abuse.
I was just curious, do they walk around with four, four stickers on their, uh?
That's correct.
So it's one sticker per?
One sticker per, that's right.
You know you've had one too many. All right.
Mr. Alexander?
And I, I totally understand the, the business owner, I mean, they're going to be compliant because they're, they value that license. It's, it's big for their profit and their existence. One of the concerns I have is someone decides he wants to go to his car and pull out a beverage and pour it into that cup three or four times. What do we, are, are we going to have any traffic, or police that are walking around during this time, or?
Well, obviously, we're going to have a police presence. Now, are we going to have the ability to, to be there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? No, that, that is, that is never the answer. I'm just being honest with you. And, and there is no perfect solution to prohibit that. Again, currently, we already allow you to sit in front of that restaurant.
Sure.
And drink the alcohol beverage.
Sure.
So really, there's nothing prohibiting that scenario from happening now.
Right.
We don't believe it's going to be a common occurrence. Yes, there may be some people that, that's their intent, but we're going to have to try to have police presence. He just, I just want you to know that we're not going to be there twenty-four, twenty-seven days a week.
No, I understand.
Over every car. But yeah, I know that the, the foot patrol, the, the downtown patrols that we do, they've been effective. Increased presence of bike patrol, especially since the summer, spring's been here. So we'll, we will continue though, especially during the summer nights.
Will those stickers change? Or are they going to be the same?
Well, we, we are going to do them in different issues. I think our first order is going to say, City of Newton is going to have a, kind of an official seal, twenty twenty with issue number one.
Right.
So there will probably, if we, if we were to expand it, we'd do twenty twenty, twenty-one, issue two. So we would have something to signify the term that we're in. And that's another thing. If the ordinance were to be adopted tonight, and effective, while we've been getting quotes on stickers, we don't have stickers available tomorrow. So, so there may be a good, you know, ten-day, seven-day period before we'd have stickers available.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just, as a chairman of the Downtown Development Authority, we've gotten off a lot on consumption, but the, the really, the thing that we wanted to encourage was more business for these restaurant owners, and hopefully that would trickle off into the other retail venues as a crowd came, because the, the restaurant owner's seating capacity has been reduced greatly, and this was a way to help them stay in business and encourage them. And so I don't want us to get lost in the weeds here too much with, about the consumption is, as much as what we're trying to do to encourage business. And I, I trust our citizens, even though there's someone may with reason why we have a police department.
Can I applaud the, the DDA for, for taking this and thinking of this, and you're kind of forward-leaning on it? So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I noticed in section two, we need to add in there sixteen ounces. I didn't see any reference to sixteen ounces in there at all.
It is referenced in section three twenty-seven B, where it references back to that particular section. That is where the sixteen-ounce limit is.
Okay. And the other, the other question, I'm just thinking logistics-wise, as Councilman Alexander mentioned, this is for city property, you know, and the good number of this is cussery down here in the square. Folks that, you know, enjoy the downtown, the square here, which is, and we had discussions with the county regarding if they step over the boundary stone of the courthouse property or something like that, just in case.
We haven't had that discussion. Mr. Faust is actually in the, in, in attendance tonight, but I don't want to put him on the spot.
We have not.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that they're brought into the discussion, so that if there was ever was an incident, you know, they know what's going on. And I do appreciate Mr. Faust being here this evening.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion, a second, to adopt the ordinance, the temporary ordinance as presented. Any other discussion or question? I'll call the question. All those in favor, you can keep by saying aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carried on first reading. Have, do have one other thing under my heading this, this evening. You saw in an email today, my desire to move the June ninth meeting to June eighteenth. Without exception from council, I'll do that. The, the obvious reason there is to get outside the date of the governor's June twelfth deadline. So we, we would move that date from June nine to June eighteen at six-thirty, unless there's an objection from council.
I would vote.
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
A second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, you can keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, well, here we go to new business. Under public hearing, this is a demolition request of the house located at sixty-six Greenville Street, constructed prior to nineteen forty. Mr. Stevenson, how are you this evening?
I'm fine, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you use the agenda item for the request to demo the structure at sixty-six Greenville Street, and that's the small structure, if you're standing in front of the Justice Center, it's off to the left, and it's a small house that's been there since about circa nineteen fifty, fifteen, somewhere around that area. And the applicant is here, and he'll be speaking to you in just a few minutes. As you can see from my submittal on noted under item A, the attached supporting documents, I did not find any data that showed the structure to be historically significant, architecturally speaking, other than the fact that it's older than fifty years. Also included on some contacts I made with Coweta County Historical Society, and they informed me that they had no further information to add, and did not find anything, any data on the property being historically significant. Also received an email from a contact I made with the African-American Heritage Museum and Research Center, and I received that email a little bit later than when I initially sent off the agenda to you, so I included it tonight. And in that email, the lady there, her name is Eve, emailed me and said that she spoke with someone named Joseph Knight, and I did speak with Joseph today as well. And the previous owner, who was Joseph Knight, was provided to me by Eve, and she, he stated that he did hear about the house had at one time been the place of the wedding of the parents of Alan Jackson. He did state that he knew about it. He didn't have any verification of it, no news clippings or photos or anything of that nature, but he did hear about it as well. In regards to item C, the preservation of the structure, this is also new to you tonight. The county submitted a document for an estimate of repairs, and I submitted one as well in the original package, and my cost was about eighty thousand dollars, which was one hundred and fifteen percent of the valuation shown on the tax records, which would qualify the structure to be demolished in our substandard housing ordinance. Their estimate is a little bit higher, substantially higher, actually, but looking through the documents, I can see that they went more of a renovation-type thing, more as a restoration cost. They did include a lot of finishes and cabinets and appliances, which I only included the minimal cost of repairs in order for the house to be occupiable. So with that, I will turn it over to Michael Faust, who's here for the county, and if you have any questions, I'll still be here after he's finished speaking to you.
Are there any questions, Mr. Faust, or do I, do I have a motion on this issue?
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the request for demolition of sixty-six Greenville Street. Any discussion or questions?
If it is a public hearing, so you need to ask if anyone?
I am. I did open that public hearing. I do ask if there is anyone here who would like to come forward and speak. If you're here for the reason of the demolition at sixty-six Greenville Street, this is your opportunity to come forward. Thank you, Mr. Sears. Okay, I will clo- close the public hearing at this time, and then ask for the motion to be repeated.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the request as we close the public hearing. Any discussion, questions?
I have a question. I have a question. In that email, there had been mention of someone trying to purchase the home at one point, to restore it. Is there any possibility that if whoever this is wants to acquire the home and move it and restore it, I mean, have we given any kind of, been given any kind of indication as to someone is interested in that in order to preserve this home?
I have had, not received any information to that, in that nature. Certainly, they can move it if they wish. They would have to bring it up to code. It's going to be quite expensive, but of course, they can do that. That is a, an option.
And that notice?
And I bring that up because the email did mention restoration.
Yes.
And preservation, and so I, I wanted to pull on that thread for a minute and, and see if there is, if we had any indication, or we'll give some sort of timeframe for the pursuit of that.
That, the notice has been up for how many months, and no one has come forward?
Right, since February?
Well, that email.
The email recently came through.
There may have been some interest there.
I had some difficulty getting a hold of the historical people. They found, with COVID and whatnot, they didn't finally get back with me, and that's why it came in delayed. But I have not heard of anything mentioned of that, but that certainly is an option.
Just to follow on with that, council?
So then I have a question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And just a real quick, just to follow on with that, and now just read the email too a little bit more, and says the house was actually a great story, that Jackson tried to buy it and preserve it. Would it be, just as a, looking for, I don't know, due diligence or whatnot, to, to try to contact the Jacksons, see if they were still be interested in purchasing the house, to move it or relocate it to a location of their choice?
Mr. Faust, you may, you may need to come forward at this point. Thank you. If you'll state your name for the record when you get to the podium. Just wondering if you might be able to answer any of those questions?
Sure, I'll, I'll try to. Thank you, Mayor and council members for considering the request.
Thank you.
Michael Faust, twenty-two East Broad Street. First of all, I'm usually on the other side of the table, so thank you for your service. Thank you, staff. They've done a great job.
How does it feel?
It's, it's interesting, that's for sure. Have a new respect for this side of the podium. As Mr. Stevenson pointed out, the county acquired the property last April. This property was actually subject to conversation back when the original site was developed in the early two thousands. We could not come to terms with the property owner at the time. We were basically requested if we had an interest in it for a number of months last year. We decided to take a look at it, and we have acquired it for the sole purposes of preserving the Justice Center complex that we have. The immediate plans are simply to level the facility if it's approved by council, and to simply grass it for potentially buffer for our secured parking lot. As Councilwoman Jenkins has pointed out, there had been a lot of interest and discussion about it. Our main goal, though, is to keep things away from the secured parking area in the Justice Center. The building is, un, structurally is problematic, and we believe something needs to be done rather quickly. We were aware- We were aware of the supposed Jackson event, and we don't want to undermine that memorial event as we all have certain things that are memorable to us. But we believe we should move forward and remove the structure as soon as we can.
If approved tonight, would you have any objection to one more time reaching out to the Jacksons locally to see if they would wish to buy the building and move it off?
Certainly, certainly, we can do that. No problem.
That satisfies my question. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Next item is designate a voting delegate for the GMA Business Meeting, which will be a virtual meeting on July the 2nd, which I will attend, sitting at my desk in front of my computer. And I've been this delegate in the past and will be happy to serve as such this year.
Make a motion to nominate Mayor Brady?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion?
Am I muted?
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next is a resolution to allow local businesses in the City of Noonan to display banner signs for longer periods of time up until, and we'll amend that to be January the 30th, at the end of January of 2021. Is there any questions on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, and a second, to approve the resolution as amended to the end of January 2021. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. The next is a consideration of a resolution to ratify link sections A, B, C, and D. This resolution is before you. It's self-explanatory. If you have any questions, be glad to entertain them. If not, a motion is appropriate.
So moved. Second.
Motion, and a second, to approve the resolution as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next is a consideration of a resolution to ratify the Traffic Signal Project, La Grange Street, Boone Drive, Cougar Way. This resolution is also before you. If there are any questions, a motion is appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, and a second, we adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. We're into unfinished business here. Under public hearing, this is a rezoning request, RZ 2020, tax 01, Fourth Quarter Properties 93 LLC for 8.44 acres located on Noonan Crossing Bypass, tax parcel number 0875043004, from CCS to MDX, consideration of ordinance after the public hearing. Lieutenant, how are you this evening?
Doing well, thank you very much. This track you all probably are very familiar with. It's going to be the final phase of Ashley Park. It's just north of the Belk Track. It's currently vacant. It's bisected by Frontage Road with parking on both sides. That connects the Belk Building with the Ashley Park Open Air Mall. If you'll go to the next slide, please. Thank you. The applicant plans to use the western 3.98 acres of the property to construct a five-level plus garage half-basement, 278-unit apartment building that's wrapped around a three-level parking deck. Recreational amenities will be located on the surface level above the parking deck, and that would include a pool and sunning decks. And they'll have a fitness center, pet services, and a club, common house that'll be located in the basement. In addition to the apartments, a portion of the building will house 15 two-level townhomes, style apartments that will face Ashley Park Boulevard with four stories of apartments above them. The targeted mix is 30% one-bedroom, 60% two-bedroom, and 10% three-bedroom. The square footages will range from 720 to 1,200 square feet. And the target residential is either someone older or looking to downsize or someone that's a millennial. The commercial development will be located on the east side of the property and will consist of approximately 55,000 square feet of retail office and restaurant space. The commercial development will have to meet the QDC requirements, and the apartments are going to have to adhere to the multifamily standards. And if you will advance there, you can see this is the Lazy Boy that they're planning to build there. And kind of see the look of that in the next slide. And this would be the look of the apartments. This one here would be the regular apartments. And if you'll go to the next one, and this would be with the town-style style look. Staff has completed an assessment of each of the eight required standards, and those have been included in your agenda packet. After reviewing them, staff found that the development met five of the eight standards. The Planning Commission, at their March 10th meeting, held a public hearing regarding this request and voted six to one to recommend approval conditioned upon the following: that the project would be consistent with the plan, density, project, data, the amenities, proper conditions, and architectural details provided as part of the application. And due to the urban nature of the project and not all requirements of the landscape, ordinance can be met. So therefore, the developer will submit a landscape plan showing alternative compliance. And that's the report of the Planning Commission.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Doe? The applicant now has an opportunity to come forward and state their position on this rezoning.
Mayor Brady and Council, thank you so much for your time. As you know, we have developed.
Mr. Thomas, if you'll state your name.
Yes, sir, I'm so sorry. My name is Stan Thomas. I live 544 Johnson Road, Sharpshur, Georgia. And we are, this is our last phase. As you know, we started on the northern side of the property with phases. And this was a new type project. It was a mixed-use that we had been doing around the country. It was very successful. And, you know, at the beginning, we didn't believe we could achieve the rents that we needed, but we wanted something that we thought was very special where we lived. And so we moved forward developing it. As we've done this, we've done a lot of these projects around the country, and we have seen that the more types of usage that you have in the project, the better the project thrives, the better the retailers do. Because they have a lot of folks that are there all day and coming in back and forth, just like office component of it, you know, retail, you know, as we start seeing medical being a component of it, multifamily being a component of it. This is a product that has not been built anywhere that I know of on the south side. It's a very expensive product to build. It's what most people that don't want multifamily say you've got to build. You've got to build a wrap product. And if you do that, it's a very high-end type product versus the garden style. We think that it really will finish off this project with some folks that have a great desire to live in this area, to be able to walk, have the amenities, the restaurants, and to enjoy everything that's been built in this area. So our typical renter is usually a person that has sold a real nice home, but they still want to live in the area. Their grandkids live there. They want the amenities. They want to be able to walk and enjoy it. But they don't want to take care of a lot of things. So that's that type person, our upper-end millennial. It's not a starter home because it is more expensive type product. We will start it renting equal to the project that's behind us. Project behind us is a buck 75 to two bucks a foot, which they've done very, very well. And we're going to be in the same area, just so that we know that we get it full. And then as we ramp up. As I mentioned, at the Planning Commission, it's about 55, 60 million to build the project. We felt like that we had enough retail in the project with what we're doing across the street, with some medical, with some of this. And we were doing some townhomes that we thought really made it real special, two-story street entry. A lot of it has street entry from it. So everything has its own garage parking underneath. And then the amenity deck with the pools and everything are very, very, very special. So that's what we have done in some of our higher-end projects. We wanted to do that type of project here as our last phase. And we have the retail across from it almost completely leased. And we had some tenants for the part that this is on, but it was more big-box type users. And we felt like this was a better mix. And so we think that it really even continues to help the retail to the north and as it goes. Be very happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Thomas? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much.
For being here this evening. Is anyone in attendance this evening who would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request? This is for Fourth Quarter Properties LLC, or 93 LLC, for 8.44 acres located on Noonan Crossing Bypass from CCS to MXD. This is a public hearing. This is your opportunity to come forward and speak in opposition. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from the council to adopt the report from the Planning Commission.
So moved. Second.
Motion, and a second, we adopt the report and recommendation from Planning Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Okay, the next item on the agenda then is to vote on the rezoning. I'll entertain a motion on that.
So moved. Second.
Motion, and a second, to approve the rezoning request. Any discussion or questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
As of the discipline, we haven't received any back from the school system, I believe. Wasn't that true? Or one of the impacts hadn't been received yet, correct?
Yes, sir. We sent out a request to the school system, but we did not hear back from them and still haven't. I don't know if it's because of the COVID or what, but we did not receive any response back from them. However, he is indicating that that's not the audience that he's targeting as far as what type of individual he wants to rent to. It's more millennials and individuals who are more empty nesters or someone moving in for less maintenance.
Anyone else have anything else? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, a motion will be put on, this item will be put on our next agenda then, please. Mr. Phillips?
Got that, Mr. Mayor.
The next item on the agenda is the second and final reading ordinance to amend the 2019 budget. This is the second and final reading. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. This next item is the second and final reading. It's a consideration of adopting amendment to sections nine, 10, 11 of the subdivision regulations. I'm going to call on Mr. Phillips for a comment here because we may have an amendment to this ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There is one small amendment to the ordinance that was presented on first reading, and that is related to the residential driveway width. That is the only additional amendment in the original ordinance. The residential driveway width was 18 feet. In the proposal that you have before you now, it is being changed or request to be changed to 24 feet. Mr. Clark, if we need him to come speak, he can. This has been something we really missed in the first revision. It's been an ongoing issue to where we have a lot of residential driveways. You see it a lot in Summer Grove, where the driveway is narrowed to 18 feet, and then they start to expand it back out to get to the driveway. And what has occurred over time is many of the homeowners have simply just paved or gravelled or made that section of their yard, it's turned into mud. After we had the first reading of this particular ordinance, Phil, I think the very next day, I had a homeowner call me and said, I'm trying to close on the home. My 18-foot driveway wouldn't even cover my, to my, with my garage. I said, well, we may have an opportunity to introduce on second reading if council would be willing to entertain that change to 24 feet. So everything stays the same. The very first revision only had to do with the street naming process, which we're going to mimic the Coweta County's street naming process and the administrative plat reviews for preliminary plats. So those were the first two changes. In this reading today, we're introducing the change from 18 to 24 feet for residential driveways. Mr. Mayor?
Anybody have any questions? Everybody understand what we're doing here?
So do we have to bring this back and vote on it again a second time?
Not if it's announced.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so anything here? Okay, so is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, and a second, to approve on the second and final reading the consideration of adopting amendments to sections nine, 10, and 11 of the subdivision regulations as amended, the driveway consideration with a 24-foot width. Okay, again, any questions? Conversation, discussion. We'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Okay, so visitors, anyone here tonight? I don't have anything on the agenda, but anyone here tonight at the meeting, off-agenda? Anyone? Okay, around the table? Start with the folks down in front?
I have nothing, sir, thank you.
Mr. Alexander?
No, sir.
I just hope everybody enjoyed their Memorial Day and have a moment to reflect on the meaning of Memorial Day. And I do want to express again my thanks to staff who's done an outstanding job during this whole episode.
Mr. Schell or Ms. Jenkins? Anything?
I'm fine.
I echo Mr. Carrickco's praise of staff during this time. They've handled it very well.
Okay, anything else? And we're going to adjourn.
Can I weigh in on just, I just want to just ditto what a pleasure it is to serve the City of Noonan, but also to work with such a great staff and council. I think everybody has really put forth an effort to, as we move through this and make an effort to get to the other side of this in an extraordinary way for the City of Noonan and the citizens of Noonan. So again, thanks to staff for all you guys do.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second to adjourn. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.